All right, meeting is called to order at 6:00. Lindsey, may we have the roll call, please?
Chairperson Philip Goldstein.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Marty Jost.
Here.
Commissioner Tom Wood.
Here.
Commissioner Wendy Newland.
Here.
Commissioner Mike Lewis.
Here.
Alternate Commissioner Michael Lowry.
Here.
Alternate Commissioner Renzo Bianchi.
Here. Thank you. Under amendments to the agenda, these are not necessarily pure amendments, if you will. Commissioners, you were, I believe, everybody was expecting at least one, if more land use code amendments tonight. I understand that now is starting in February. We will have, right now, the plan is, we will have one, we will have a meeting on January 21st, and we're going to probably have one, we will have one land use code amendment dealing with parking, is what I understand. So, and we're going to use, per my suggestion, that we try a little bit different of way of parsing these, the details of these land use amendments, we'll kind of use that one on the 21st as kind of a little test case for some of the ways to view these things as we get more and more that start coming in February. That's one thing, if you are, if you're wondering why we didn't have any amendments. The other thing is, we, when we get to public comment here, as you, most of you know, come readings regularly, we allow public comment on just about, if not every issue. The public comment on Item 7B, the Old Town Alley Vacation, we will have that right before, when we get to that agenda item. So lest you be confused, and as we might do and say, please offer any comments you have on that during open public comment. So is that clear, comments on that? And I know there's some folks here that are going to speak that. We will have public comment on that, as we will on all these items, and that will occur at the individual items. So, no more amendments, the agenda, commissioners, anything else? Yes?
Yeah, I just want to congratulate the town of Timneth for receiving the certificate of achievement in excellence in financial reporting. I think that's wonderful. And then, one more thing, I was at the post office yesterday, and I understand that our post office is up for an award, best small-town customer service, so if you go to the post office, please do, fill out a survey.
Thank you, very astute. Okay, administrative, all the regular commissioners are here, so neither of the alternates will vote. So this, now, this is general public comment. Is there anybody signed up, Lindsey or otherwise, for general public comment? This is something that is not on the agenda tonight, anything at all.
No one has signed up for a general public comment. We do have some other agenda items that people wish to speak on.
Okay, nobody, last call, anything not on the agenda? Very good. We'll close the general public comment. The consent agenda consists of two items tonight. One is the minutes of the 17 December 2024 minutes, and also the resolution, you recall, our town attorney, Ms. Steffel, indicating that there would be a resolution forthcoming listing the meetings that are scheduled for this year. When you look at that list, by, by the way, you'll notice there, that doesn't mean we're necessarily going to have every one of those meetings. It also doesn't mean that there are three dates where there's only one meeting in a month. There's still a possibility we would have a second meeting, but you'll get plenty of notice of that. I believe, Carolyn, I, I believe I'm obliged, because this is the first time we've had something under consent agenda, I'm obliged to at least ask, does anybody have any reason it's your right to have that pulled out of the consent agenda if you want to discuss it? I'm not sure why, but thank you.
That's exactly right.
I've been paying attention in council meetings, how they handle that. Does anybody have any reason to pull 5B out of the consent agenda, which then allows comment on it? No? Okay. All right, so with that, in asking, does anybody have any additions or corrections to the minutes? Okay, hearing then, do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda carries on a 5-0 vote. Move on to business item 6A, a resolution recommending approval of the annexation of the property known as Pooter School District, Timneth 50, into the town of Timneth. And that is Chad, thank you.
Thank you, chairperson. If it's all right with the commission or commissioners, I am going to review 6A and 6B together as they are interrelated. So as you mentioned, this is the Pooter School District, Timneth 50, annexation and rezoning. The applicant is Pooter School District, and the owner is also Pooter School District, represented tonight by Brian Carnahan. This is a resolution recommending approval of the annexation for the property known as Pooter School District, Timneth 50, into the town. Here is a short glimpse of where we're at within the town's development review process. The annexation and initial zoning of a property is the initial procedure within the development review process, so this is what gets started for that development of the property. As you may recall, on December 10th last year, town council adopted an initiation resolution which formally accepted this annexation petition and confirmed its compliance with the state law. This resolution commenced the annexation process. Since then, we have properly noticed for the public hearing, that will be on January 28th, so there was a notice sent to property owners within 500 feet of that property. A hearing notice was also published in the Colorado in, for four consecutive weeks. So just a brief description of the proposal in front of us, this is a request, again, for 50 acres of unincorporated land in Laramore County, again referred to as the Pooter School District, Timneth 50. It is located at the southeast corner of Busgrove Road and Main Street here in Timneth. Per the State of Colorado's Municipal Annexation Act, an annexation can take place in three ways, one being by landowner petition, signed by more than 50% of the landowners who own more than 50% of the land, which would be the case for this property owned solely by the Pooter School District. Also, it could have, could be done by annexation election, through an election of property owners and elected officials, or through an annexation of enclave where the area is entirely surrounded solely by the town of Timneth. Again, property is located at the southeast corner of Main Street and Busgrove Road. Part of the state requirements for, within the Annexation Act, is to have a contiguous boundary of at least 1/6 of the property within the town to be eligible for annexation. As you can see, there is a, it is bound Main Street on the west of the property, Timneth Parkway to the east, and then North Timneth Farms Annexation, which would also be known as the Timneth Augmentation Pond to the south. With this annexation, the applicant is proposing to zone the property commercial mixed use. This zoning designation is in conformance with the comprehensive plan, which also has the designation of commercial mixed use. Within this zoning district, it does permit the use of a school facility, public or private, with conditions established within the code. Again, the analysis and findings of the town's review of this annexation, one that aligns with the policies outlined in our IGA, or Intergovernmental Agreement with the Laramore County, which states the town's intent to annex properties within the GMA as expeditiously as possible, consistent with the terms of the agreement, and that the town agrees to consider annexation for any parcel of land located within the GMA, which is eligible for voluntary annexation pursuant to the Annexation Act, which is where this property falls. In addition to that, within the agreement, it states that the town will agree to annex all county road, right-of-ways, easements, and adjacent to voluntary annexation in accordance with this act. So all adjacent properties will have their right-of-ways annexed with this, this application. Secondly, the annexation request is satisfying all the requirements for the voluntary annexations in the Colorado Revised Statute, one of those being that it achieves greater than 1/6 contingency of its perimeter with the existing boundaries of the town of Timneth. It states within the revised statute that not less than 1/6 of the perimeter of the area proposed to be annexed is contiguous with the annexing municipality. This property is actually representing 69% of its perimeter to be contiguous with the town. Lastly, the requested CMU zoning designation is consistent with the town's zoning map and comprehensive plan, providing the guidance for the appropriate land uses within the town of Timneth. With that, staff is proposing to approve, or recommending approval on both Items 6A and 6B. Those motions have been outlined here on your screen. Again, there is a representative if there are any questions, but at this stage, we are in annexation, so no development is sought at this time.
And we, we are voting on these to, tonight end separately, correct?
Correct, yep.
Okay. Anybody wish to offer any public comment? Anybody sign up specifically on this, or otherwise? Anybody wish to offer public comment on either of these items?
No one has signed up to speak on this item.
Okay. Well, we'd have to open public comments separately on these, I believe, so I'm going to do that at this time. Neither item, I presume anybody wishes, I have to ask, right, Carolyn? So, public comment on Item 6A, nobody's interested on 6B either, of course. Very good. All right, so is there anything the representative would like, would like to offer before I bring it up here? Oh.
No.
No, nobody. Okay, that's what I, all right. Okay, a little off my game here. So, any, the representative, anything you'd like to offer? Okay, you may have some questions, if so, we'll have you come up to the podium. Commissioners, questions for staff or the Pooter School District representative on either or both of these items? Mike, yeah?
So, one, I guess for staff, basic question, for me, anyway. What's the advantage of annexing this property into the town of Timneth?
Yes, so for one, it increases the boundary within the town for a commercial mixed-use zoning district, so it does add some value with the land itself within the town. Also, it provides a property that would, is a vision for a school facility that I think would benefit a growing community such as the town of Timneth. There are other benefits that additional properties within the town could bring potentially financially to growing community development surrounding that property, but those are a few of the reasons why it's beneficial for the town. It also provides area that we can then monitor and provide services to.
Okay. My second question is, is it going to be a school, or is it just it could become a school?
There is no immediate plan to construct a school on this site. It is just the ultimate vision that this will be the location of a next school site within the town of Timneth. There's a lot of evaluation that needs to go on from the district as to when that occurs. It's, it's unknown at this time, but based on the growth of Timneth, it could be sooner rather than later, we don't know exactly, but it is just the intent or vision to be a school site.
But if it's zoned commercial mixed use, it could be used for something else?
It could be, yes. And if it were to turn over property ownership, yes, there could be various uses there.
The reason I ask that question is, in the annexation agreement in Section 3, it says that it's understood that the town of Timneth Municipal Building Code will not apply to the construction of buildings and facilities on this property. So what does that mean? Let's say they say, we're not going to build a school, we're going to sell it off and build commercial buildings, are they then not, don't have to apply to the building codes of Timneth because of this?
Yeah, so I think maybe we could look at that language just to ensure that it is through the use of Pooter School District that that applies, because they do have state regulations that they follow, rather than what the town would be reviewing against. So I think that there could be some clarifying language, maybe with Carolyn's help, to ensure that that wouldn't be something that would go beyond our scope of review if it were to go a different plan.
Yeah, because I, I understand the language if it's a school, because schools are built certain, I get that. But then if they decided, oh, we're going to build a bunch of restaurants here, and suddenly they're just, it's a free-for-all, and that would be, I think, concerning.
Yeah, well, we'll certainly look at that to ensure that that's.
I'm, I'm reading this as an engineer, not as a lawyer, so forgive me for that, you know, but I just wanted to bring up, I appreciate that. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you. That's a great catch. Carolyn, is there, is this, when, when we get to it, is this something we, a condition we'll need to add?
I don't think you need to add a condition. Chad and I will just clarify it, I'm going forward to council.
Okay. And this doesn't change Pooter School District's view on anything, I presume? That's a great catch, Mike. Other questions or comments on 6A and B?
So, given that, the questions there, just curious, why annex, if there's no immediate plans, why annex it now?
So it's partially cooperative effort with the district and the town. Part of that is the adjacency to some of those roadways that need improvements and need to be annexed into the town. It's beneficial to have them within the town so that we can work on those improvements. So they've been a great partner with us. It's always been the intent that this property be a location for their need or future site, but they're willing to move forward at this time to get that started so that the adjacency and right-of-way could be acquired with the town. So it was a partnered attempt within that.
Other questions, commissioners? I have, I know, this falls under the heading very much of putting the court, the cart way before the horse, but anybody who's driven through down Main Street, past Tim, to try and go past Timneth Elementary at drop-off and pickup time, something, it's never too early to start thinking about, plenty of queuing up drive for this property. I see, I see our representative, Pooter School District, never too early to start thinking about that. Even, even Bethke at that time is, is a problem, even though there's a bike lane that people pull over in, but, so, just thinking ahead, commissioners. Other questions, comments, anybody? Okay, Carolyn, you got, you, Chad have got this one, then, we don't have to add a condition to this, then, okay. With that, first I need a motion on business item 6A, a resolution recommending approval of the annexation of the property known as Pooter School District, Timneth 50, into the town of Timneth.
I forgot my glasses, but I'll try. Motion to approve Item 6A, resolution recommending approval of the annexation of the property known as Pooter District, School District, Timneth Fish.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Was that, aye, we had aye, okay. All right. Okay, Item 6A carries on a 5-0 vote. Item 6B, I need a motion on Item 6B zoning map amendment for the property known as Pooter School District, Timneth 50. Somebody who can read, please.
I'd like to approve zoning map amendment for the property known as Pooter School District, Timneth 50.
So, second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item 6B carries, welcome to Timneth, again. All right, we move on to business item 7A, an ordinance establishing a temporary moratorium on the establishment of natural medicine facilities. Our town attorney, Carolyn Steffel.
Thank you. I think we've introduced the subject to you a little bit shortly, but as you know, there was a state legislation passed that allows for establishment of natural medicine facilities within the state of Colorado. Those specifically consist of both distribution centers that are known as licensed natural medicine healing centers, and there are also provisions for manufacturing facilities. And we, our town code does not specifically address these yet, because they have not been of permitted use in Colorado up until January 1. The state has not, to my knowledge, has not yet, it looked about a week ago, issued any permits yet for the facilitators that need to be permitted to open the healing centers, and it's expected for the state to take a while to keep working through that. But they have adopted recently regulations, and the town needs additional time with, to work with town staff on recommendations for additions to the town code that would address both these as permitted uses or as conditional permitted uses, in which zoning districts they're allowed in, and any of the reasonable terms and conditions on time, place, and manner that the town may want to recommend to you. So our proposal is to have an ordinance that would adopt a six-month moratorium from the date approved by town council on any applications for establishment of natural medicine businesses or facilities within town limits, and issuance of any land use approvals, building permits, or other licenses or permits allowing the operation of natural medicine businesses or facilities. And in that time, we will be working on a land use code amendment that we will be bringing first to the planning commission for recommendation, and to town council for an ordinance for two readings, with the goal to have that completely adopted by the town council within that six-month period. So this is just being presented to you as for a recommendation, and then it will be presented to town council beginning one week from today on January 14th.
Thank you. So, everybody understands we're considering only whether to adopt a moratorium. I know council knows this is coming, and has already mentioned that they are supportive of that. Is there anybody that has any public comment? We can, we can accept public comment on this? Is there anybody who wishes to speak? Again, we're only considering a moratorium, but I suppose anything, given the subject matter, would be, dare I say, groovy? Anybody, no, okay, nobody wishes to offer? All right, commissioners, any questions? I sort of expected to see Cheech and Chong out in the gallery tonight. All right. Any commissioners, questions on, go ahead.
Seifi, not so much on the moratorium, but I, I know, you know, if you read the Natural Medicine Health Act of 2022, it is very, very broad, it's not limited to mushrooms of any kind, and things like the, the words in the moratorium focusing on phyllosyvene and so forth, we really dig into the science, and if you happen to be a farmer, or a gentleman farmer, or whatever, and you include mushrooms, like I do, this, this, this act, and this particular requirement, has no quantification for how much phyllosyvene is too much. And if you look at the, the silo chemicals in mushrooms entirely, this would effectively ban shiitakes, morels, porcinis, oysters, lion's mane, cups, even the small buttons and Swiss browns that you can find at Walmart and, and Costco would effectively be banned for sale in, in the town of Timneth, which I think is overly broad and unreasonable. I think that there's, there's been over 20 challenges of the, the act of the law from everybody, from future farmers to the dairy farmers. It would, it would really impact agriculture, and because of the historic agricultural nature of the town of Timneth, I find it shocking that the town of Timneth would ever want to adopt anything associated with the Natural Medicine Health Act of 2022. It would effectively ban farm stands, it would ban family farms, and, and anybody who would say, if you have an apple tree in your backyard, and you think, you know, an apple a day keeps the doctor away, well, that's a natural medicine, and you would be banned from giving apples away to your neighbors. So, so I, I see this as a very poorly-written law that is likely to be challenged on constitutional grounds, and, and I think that the town should be very hesitant before we adopt anything associated with it. I, I don't want you to take away my backyard garden.
Thank you for that comment. Certainly, the intent is not to prohibit regular farming. There is, you know, the Natural Medicine Code has a definition of natural medicine, so it wouldn't be just anything that's good for you. It wouldn't apply to ginseng or apples, or anything else that's good for you, oxygen.
Yeah, if you read the law, and I have read it word for word, and words matter, these words are overly broad.
Well, I think, do you have a recommendation about this moratorium specifically? Because at this point, we're not adopting any restrictions that relate to the broader Natural Medicine Act. In fact, what we're doing is the opposite, is giving us the time to really research and dig into those issues, and then come back.
I'm not opposed to the moratorium, but I do think during the moratorium, we need to very carefully talk to folks. If you talk to the Agriculture Department at the Colorado State University, the professors are uniformly against this act.
Okay, we'll note that. I'm sure you, we'll hear more about this. This will be, all joking aside, I'm sure this will be a very complicated process, and I, safe to say, staff's probably already looking at this, anticipating. We do, absent, Carolyn is, it's safe to say, absent of a further moratorium continuance, if you will, there is only six months to get this into practice.
That's correct. So after six months, someone could apply for a natural medicine business, but can be, you know, unless it's extended.
Okay, thanks. Commissioners, yeah, Renzo?
Yeah, that, that's what I was asking, is six months seems a little bit short of a period for something like this, but you just answered it saying that it could be extended, and I think that that's necessary. The other thing, piggybacking on what Tom was saying, is, and I know you're going to be doing all your research, but when we talk about storage and manufacturing, that's really something that, that we have to pay a lot of attention to, because of the impacts it can have to the environment and so forth. So those are the only comments I wanted to make.
Other comments, commissioners?
No, Carolyn, I just have a question. So, explain to me how this moratorium thing works? You file something with the state and say, how does it work? I'm just curious.
It really only applies to town applications, so I suppose if someone were to apply for a facilitator license with the state, they do refer it back to the town to find out what the town's code requirements are, and the town has the opportunity to comment, so at that point, we would notify the state that we had this moratorium, but I do not know that we proactively notified the state. I will note that a number of other communities have adopted moratoriums. I'm not sure how many, but I'm aware of at least two.
Other, other comments? Nope. Okay. At that point, I have a motion, we're voting on business item 7A, an ordinance establishing a temporary moratorium on the establishment of natural medicine facilities. So a yes vote is to establish a moratorium. Do I have a motion on business item 7A?
Motion to approve Item 7A, ordinance to establish a temporary moratorium on the establishment of natural medicine facilities.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Business item 7A carries on a 5-0 vote. On to business item 7B, on Old Town Alley Vacation, Jay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson. So after staff has reviewed the applicable laws, the comp plan, future needs of the town, and growth trends in, trends in recent years, I'm considering public comments. So when we first brought this to you in November, as part of the evaluation process for whether this vacation was necessary, so we went through, reviewed those things, and, you know, basically, after. after further internal discussion, Public Works Department would wish to withdraw the vacation. A little bit of background on what it takes to vacate an alley. Section 2912, 9 of the Land Use Code, gives six criteria. The criteria are as follows: consistent with the comp plan and other adopted town policies, plans, and including any adopted transportation plan or streets plan. The land to be vacated is no longer necessary for public use in convenience. It resolves a longstanding structural encroachment into a right-of-way. The vacation will not leave any landlocked parcels. It facilitates road and right-of-way exchange if the applicant is requesting vacation of mapped rights of way, and the actual constructed road is located elsewhere in the applicant's property. Or finally, it creates an opportunity, or it's an opportunity to provide for development that is more consistent with the comp plan and the land use code. But again, at this time, Public Works Department wishes to withdraw.
We've got a number of questions, I know, up here. Scott, you had something to add?
Yeah, I appreciate that, Chairwoman Sting. I do want to provide a little backstory to the initial request. So a resident from Tinmouth brought this to our attention and with staff regarding the uncertainty of the status of the alley. And so at that point in time, the records that we had on hand, it wasn't very clear if the alley was vacated. It, you know, if you look back at the history, it existed, it was vacated, and it was reannexed back into the town, and it was reestablished. We were kind of going through the cycles of trying to understand what the current status of the legal status of alley is. For the research, we determined based on Colorado State statutes that it does legally is established, and based on that finding and the criteria that Jay outlined, we did have some concerns about the landlocked aspect of it and possibility of providing some options for future development. So one of the things that we typically look at for redevelopment of properties, puterfire often requires a couple points of access. So with this alley, there could be a potential, if there was redevelopment in that area, it would provide that opportunity for an additional access point. So that's the reason why we're withdrawing it. Doesn't mean it can be considered in the future, but that's the status or the backstory of the request at this time.
So I'll just offer, and then we're going to open up for public comment. If you recall, this was on the agenda at the November 19 meeting, I believe. We didn't necessarily expect there to be as much interest as there was, and we're glad there was, despite the fact that it was rather polarizing. I think that was a good thing. I certainly think the continuance of this tonight points to why, first and foremost, better to get it, get it right than get it quickly. But now we're at this point, and I appreciate the fact that the staff took time to look at this further. So let's open it up first to public comment, and then we'll bring it up here, and I imagine we'll have some comments for both staff and perhaps some of the public. And Scott, might I correct? There is no vote on this because this is, the request is being pulled.
Yeah, that's correct. And also, just to clarify, again, the reason why staff brought it forward is because of the nature of the request, because there are multiple property owners, it wouldn't make sense for one property owner to come in and request a portion of the vacation of the alleyway. And so that's originally the idea is why we agreed to bring it forward as a more approach rather than a piecemeal approach. And again, based on the research that we did, we feel pretty confident that the alley is there, will continue to exist as it is. Right now, there are no plans or intent to, for the town to improve that alley, to require encroachments to be removed. Really, this is more looking towards the far future if and when this were to ever redevelop.
Thank you.
But yeah, there is no action by the planning commission tonight since the petition is being withdrawn.
Thank you. And that last part was particularly pertinent, I appreciate that. So with that, we're going to open up to public comment. I believe most of you know, not all of you know, the routine. Come up, make sure the microphone's on, and you have three minutes. Please state your name and address, and who would like to go first? Yes, sir. You know how to turn that microphone? There's a little graphic of a little man, little person talking.
There we go.
Okay.
Greg Rosing, 5200 Fourth Avenue. I am, in fact, a citizen who came to the town requesting information about whether or not the alley was vacated. The two surveys that I have for my property both show that alley is being vacated. Obviously, there are no records that confirm that, but I do know in the 70s and 80s, many of the records from Town Hall have been either discarded, or damaged, or lost, or some other issue that they're no longer there. One thing that I do want to point out is that the alley, if it's maintained, will only provide access to 4020 Kern Street. 4020 Kern Street's legal description includes the alleyway. That's been recorded at least five times with the county, Laramie County, recording. And the property to the north of that, 4016 Kern Street, also includes the alley in its legal description, which has been documented at least nine times. I can't imagine that the title insurance carriers would make that mistake that many times if that had not been vacated at some point. So really, there is no access there. The only access that it will provide in the future is to 4020 Kern Street, which is just north of my property. So maintaining that alley will only provide access once I have to tear that building down, which is a historical reminder of the agricultural basis of Tinmouth. And I understand that you can't make any decisions tonight. I did come to the town, it's been two years, I was assured for two years, don't worry, we'll take care of it, and all of a sudden, we've done a 180. So I'm a little bit flabbergasted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we may, we may circle back to that. I want to get through all the public comments. Anybody else signed up, or anybody else wish to speak on this item? Please.
Little microphone guy.
You just turned it off, Lori.
Back again.
It's on now.
Okay. So the November meeting, we missed, and I'm sorry, my name is Lori Miller, and I represent and live in the properties at 4,000 Kern, Del Miller Estate Trust. So at the first meeting in November, Mr. Baker indicated that the alley was vacated in 1967 and 1975. I wanted to wonder, I wanted to ask, have there been any documents or any proof that it was unvacated since this time?
Let's, Lori, do you have other comments? I'm going to ask the staff to speak.
Essentially.
Come back to that question.
So my question is, is the 1975 vacate of the alley still in force? And can you prove that it is in force? And if this, and at this point, we would just like a clarification from your legal department, because you guys have researched this thoroughly, whether or not the alley is vacated or is it not vacated? And I don't understand this piecemeal approach, as if we want it vacated, if you indicated that it's not vacated, then Greg Rosing and ourselves and other property owners would have to piecemeal come in here and apply to have it vacated again if it's not vacated? And some clarification would be really appreciated.
Okay, thank you, Lori. I'm going to.
Hold on.
We're going to come back to staff here. Let's get through any additional public comments on this business. Yes, sir. Would you turn that, turn that microphone, turn, there's a little graphic of a little person there talking.
There we go.
There we go. Red light. You're on. Could you state your name and address, please?
Yes. Well, first of all, thank you, Commissioner and Planning Commission. My name is Chris Alberich, and I live at 4014 Kern Street. And I just wanted to add a little bit to what I've previously said regarding our property. Our property sits further, further back from Kern Street, and we do have utilities that run through there. There's an easement that we actually use as a driveway, but legally, it's an easement. And if, so you have the easement going down, and then there would be an alleyway going potentially through, through that easement as well. And we're just concerned, part of the concern is our property could potentially be landlocked. And as well, again, there's the utility factor that goes through there, the gas and electric that goes back through, would go through that alleyway and along the easement potentially as well. So I just want that to be considered. It is a concern of ours. Our property sits a little further back from where the alleyway would be, but still, logistically, you never know what could happen. We're concerned about the landlock situation with the, with the easement and the alleyway regarding the egress and ingress into our property. That's all.
Thank you, Chris. And we're going to, we're going to try as we might to get some answers, and I'll explain in a minute. Anybody else, before I go any further with this? So staff, and those of you spoke about this issue, is it, I guess, more a question for staff, given the fact that we're not voting on this, if you can address any of these issues, and folks out there too, I understand staff, put you on the spot here, if we can't address something tonight, is it safe to say that you can do this offline? We can schedule time, people come in and discuss these things with you?
Yeah, so we're absolutely happy to meet with residents again to clarify. My understanding is there's a 1981 plat that did delineate the alley, and that's, again, what we based our decision on. The, I think, in regard to Del Miller's property, the two different dates that we looked at, there was a portion of the alley that was vacated to do, address your property or your mother's property. So I believe that portion of the alley has been vacated. At least I know on your mother's lot, I'm not 100%, I don't have the map in front of me, not 100% sure on the residence that you live in. But it is very confusing, and again, looking at the records that we were able to obtain, the decision that we're looking at was based on, I believe, the 1981 plat that did delineate the alley heading south from Del Miller's property. I do acknowledge the easement that runs perpendicular to the alley. There are currently no utilities within the platted alley, and that was, again, some of the original discussions that we had about the request. Going back to the question about the piecemeal approach, we could have just honored the request from Mr. Rosing's property to vacate just his portion of the alley, which is the southernmost portion, then you'd have the north and southern end of the alley would be vacated, and the middle piece that wouldn't. So that's why we decided to bring it forward as a town request, so that we're looking at all, the entirety of the alley rather than a piecemeal approach. So that's the thought process. Again, that's where we're at tonight in withdrawing that because of the information that we have discovered.
Are you, did you, if I was, did you speak to Chris's concern about the utility easement? Can you, or is that something you need to talk with him offline?
Well, again, if we, I believe his easement would be running across the alley, perpendicular to the alley, correct? Yeah. Again, with our records, I don't show, I don't know if it's showing there, but if it's an easement, a utility easement, the town would honor that within the alley. We're not going to go in and improve the alley and require any encroachments to go, you know, out of the alley, because that's what would happen with the vacation of the alley. The alley's still there, we're not going to require or request any encroachments to be removed. That utility easement is within that property, we would honor that utility easement for his access. It's both access and utility to his site. Carolyn?
Chris, what's on your head is that I don't usually do this, but I know this is a difficult issue. Just for whatever it's worth, 14 years I've been involved, and by no means do I know any, this probably is the most confusing thing I've seen come forward in that hall. That probably is a good thing because of all the transitions we've had, but this is a most difficult issue. Is, and I'm jumping the gun a little bit here, because other commissioners may have questions, but in the interest of trying to get as much information, whether that entirely satisfies everybody or not, Scott, would it, and staff, would it be acceptable, anybody comes up after the meeting, and if they want to schedule time to meet with you offline, I hear you would be.
Yeah, we'd be happy to meet with staff. I think Carolyn was trying to get a comment, and maybe to correct something that I said, but.
Okay, so I just wanted to speak to the comment, asking from Laura, asking what, whether there are any documents after 1975. So first of all, this property was reannexed in 1976, and we found Ordinance Number 2, Series 1976, which annexed the, it was called the South Side Annexation, and it specifically included a 20-foot alley laying along the east side of the lots, lots 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12 of block 7. So that was one of the documents, and an easement is, if a right-of-way is created upon annexation, that can be sufficient to create a public street right-of-way. The second one we found was actually, it was a 1988 plat, not 1981. And the 1980 plat also shows that this is a public right-of-way, and it shows a portion of the alley is being vacated, but not all of it. And there was an additional plat for the Sunrise Annexation plat, that was 1987, that also showed this as an alley. So then we looked at a state statute, which is, let's see, section, okay, 3123107, Colorado Vice Statutes, which says, "All streets, parks, and other places designated and described for public use and in the map or plat of any city or town, or of any addition made to such city or town, are public property and the fee title thereto is vested in said city or town." So looking at those together, that's how we made the conclusion that this was an existing alley currently, and so that at least gave us satisfaction that it is currently a town alley still.
So, again, I'm still going to bring it up here, but let's stay on this. Is there, is there a, any way, whether, certainly perhaps not tonight, but going forward, is there any way to reasonably satisfy, reasonable being the operative word, reasonably satisfy all interested parties in this? Scott, you want to go first?
I'm a reasonable person, but I, you know, I do appreciate the interest by the residents, and I do think, I'm just speculating, I think their concerns are the uncertainty if the alley exists or not, and what improvements they have on their property that they've made over the years would be impacted by that. And I think that's probably the root of the issue, is making sure that those improvements are okay. Typically, the town would look at these as legally nonconforming, lawfully nonconforming. So they can continue to maintain them, but they couldn't expand or change them over time. So I think there's something we could work on to make sure that they have that certainty so that they don't feel like there's that uncertainty or infringement on their property, also in regards to the access and easement, so there isn't any landlocked parcels. So I think there's something that we could work with the property owners so that they have that certainty moving forward. I know that's just me speculating, the concern. The vacation would kind of absolve most of those questions, but since we're not at that point now, I think that next step would be looking at how we could provide some certainty on what they can and can't do within that platted alley on their property.
That certainly sounds encouraging. Carolyn, you have something to add to that?
Yeah, I'm comfortable also that we could work together with the property owners, help them understand what they can do with the property.
Greg, yeah, I'll allow, please come up, come back up. We don't normally do this, but under the circumstances, would.
Yeah, so my initial concern about.
Yeah, so my initial concern about that was that my neighbor to the north had indicated that they want access through that alleyway to their property, so that they can add another dwelling on that property without the, whoever utilizes that, from having to go through the front of the property.
That didn't sound like a question, that sounded like a statement. What was, was that a question?
I'm just trying to give some background.
Oh, yeah.
So, so I don't know that just tableting is going to resolve whether or not.
I did say reasonably, but perhaps I spoke too soon, or, Scott, you still, I really appreciate what you said a few minutes ago, do we still, with that in mind, do we still, again, with reasonably have some way to keep all the people happy all the time?
You know, I will say that reasonably, we typically do for any new development, is typically developments would have to pay for those improvements that, that process. So, and not understanding what the intent or notion is of the property owner to the north, if they were to do changes to the property where they wanted to improve the alley, then they would have to make, they would have to pay for those improvements, and we'd have to go through a process for people to remove their encroachments. It probably would not be a very fun process to go through on that. Because it's an unimproved alley, that's kind of the trick about this, is my prior experience, we had a number of unimproved alleys, and many improvements have occurred on those unimproved alleys, so it's not an uncommon thing in older communities. But positions from towns typically is not to go in and improve those alleys, they are costly and expensive to maintain, so if there was a point in time, if those blocks or whatever were to redevelop, then that's the opportunity to go in and improve those alleys, so that there is access to those points. So, you know, going back to the landlocked property, the property to the north would have access off Kern, so that would probably be the reasonable point for them to do that, rather than to go through the alley. But we can have those conversations and consider that.
It still sounds encouraging that you have at least some, again, reasonable options.
Yeah.
Okay, let's bring it up here. Commissioners, thank you, everybody, so far. Let's hope it keeps going in that direction here. Commissioners, questions on this very complicated issue? Marty?
No questions on it, just how I feel about it, I guess. We're not voting on it, but it's like, it is complex, and I think you would need to look at each individual property, each individual building, and when it was, when it was built. You know, you couldn't just, I wouldn't think you'd be able to just go in and clear all that out, but the way I look at it is, it was, we know it was vacated in 67, it was deannexed, presumably the county vacated it again in 75, and then there's no record of it being unvacated again. It was just a plot was done, or it was brought, when it was re-annexed, it was, for some reason, put back in there, but I just, I understand the state laws and all that stuff, but it just doesn't seem feasible that that's not vacated, and it doesn't seem feasible that you'd be able to go in and clear that, and actually make an alley.
I agree, Marty. I think that the preponderance of historical evidence suggests that it should be vacated, but the fact that Public Works has pulled the request, you know, we don't have anything to decide on.
I presume somebody could come forward with a request, again, to vacate it, it would go through the same process. Seems it's been, it's now been vetted thoroughly, Carolyn, and it may end up at the same result, but, anybody want to finish the sentence?
And again, I think just the preservation of right-of-way from like a town's perspective is a pretty high bar to maintain, and so, you know, we, when Justin and I first met with the property owner, we seriously took it into consideration. We've both been in the public sector for a long time, and, you know, we don't take those decisions lightly on, you know, supporting an alley vacation, so moving that forward at that point in time, we felt like it made a good case. But again, looking at the historical record, the documentation that we have, we feel like that it's probably best to pause and continue to move forward, and see if we can address some of the additional concerns by the residents, rather than vacating the alley at this point in time. Thanks.
Yes, ma'am. Come up, yes, again, we don't need to do this, but this is a most unusual circumstance. Same thing, state your name and address, please.
My name is Sandy Alberico. Chris is my husband, so we live at 4014 Kern Street, and just, I mean, kind of a common sense, food for thought idea, is instead of having everybody in the last however 30-plus years who have decided to have things built, or they were already buildings there when they bought the properties, have them all clear it out. I don't understand why this person could, just can't have an easement on the side of their property coming from Kern Street like we do. Our property sits behind another property, and we have an easement that allows us access to our property. We don't need an alleyway, but we do need that access, so if eventually there ends up being an alley through there, and, you know, the city or whoever decides, we're going to put a fence on both, you know, sides, and how in the heck do we get to our house? But, that's all I have to say.
Thanks.
Just a comment.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to, let's just turn it into a Judge Judy here. I'm going to close the public comment. Really appreciate, I heard some considerable degree of confidence, at least, I, I am hearing that from staff here, and I would encourage you, whether you do it when the meeting concludes here momentarily, or later, to schedule time if you feel you want to discuss it more. But I think what you're going to hear is, within every possible reasonableness, the staff will bend over backwards, as they usually do, to try and accommodate what, again, is a most unusual circumstance. So Carolyn, is that stated? I, your endorsement usually, is that stated correctly?
We will certainly attempt to work, I guess. I expect staff will definitely attempt to work with the property owners within the confines of what we can do under our code.
Good, thank you. All right. Commissioners, other questions on this? Wendy?
This may seem really silly or dumb question here, but Scott, Carolyn, Lindsay, how do, what are we doing now, so that in 20, 30 years from now, people aren't saying, "Those crazy people in 24, 25 didn't keep records," or "They lost records"? What are we doing now, so that we don't have this issue in 30 years, where nobody knows what happened?
Well, I mean, simply records are now being digitized, the town is doing quite a lot of things to upgrade their record-keeping, and so documents are now being digitized, and we have a new share site where departments are all able to access the same servers to share documents. So eternally, there's been a big improvement in the record-keeping and maintenance. In terms of recorded documents on the properties, it would be the same in original plots that the property owners would see.
That's good, that's an excellent question, too.
This might be asking, do you know what you don't know? Are there any other similar situations headed down the, down the pipe?
So we can quit.
Yeah.
No comment. Yeah, no, I'm aware that there's other alleys in the community that may pose some similar challenges. Great question.
So there may be other blocks like that, that, because, I mean, looking at the GIS, clearly this one, the county doesn't think there's an alley there, but there are alleys elsewhere.
Well, there's, we actually have another vacation request in the, in the queue. It's not an alley, it's County Road 3F, just west of here. So, you know, they're complicated when you have historical roadways that were either prescribed easements that weren't, you know, we actually had the consideration with the lidera and boundary lines and what have you. So, they're never easy to look at, and you're looking at utilities and ownership and access easements, so there's a very similar request that we're working on, that's not an alley, but it has a lot of same challenges associated with it, so they're out there.
They were, they were ready for that one, I know they were. Yes, other, others, other questions, comments? Anything else? Okay, we're not voting on this item, so unless anybody has any else on this item, I'll move on to reports. Commissioners, anything for the good of the order? Nothing? Okay, staff, any, any reminders, anything at all? Very good. With that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all, staff especially, for.